Good evening, welcome everybody to the Forest Park Planning Commission. I'm Dave Aronson, the Chairman of the Planning Commission. We'll go down through a work session and then go into our Planning Commission meeting. The way this will work, I will call on the people to discuss anything. We will go down each member of the Planning Commission for comments. As you're called on, if you have any comments, please make them. When we get down to any item that you are on the video with us to speak about, I'll call for that and then ask you to speak. And when you speak, would you please give your name, address, and what item you're speaking about on the agenda? So with that, we'll go ahead and start. And we'll open the work session with FPD 20-003, Special Exception Adult Daycare, 1257 Kemper Meadow Drive. Mr. Anderson, would you like to present the report to the Commission first?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This request is for a special exception. And the use, as you mentioned, is a daycare facility for senior adults or adults with disabilities. The location is in the Kemper Tech Center, which is an office park consisting of five buildings located at the entrance to the Kemper Meadow Business Center. Sure, you're all familiar with the location. The zoning is SPA 1, and that's in Sub District A, which does have a primary permitted use of administrative offices. In addition to some listed special exceptions, of which this is one. So this is the reason for the application to the Planning Commission. And the building itself is the southwest corner of the, or I'm sorry, the northwest, take that back, southwest corner of the property. Southeast. I didn't put a, you know, I didn't put a compass on this map, and that's, that's really getting me. But just, it is the building that is closest to Wenton Road and also to Kroger. The, the company is a home healthcare business that has locations here in Cincinnati and also in the Columbus area. Going into the special exception standards, I won't read these to you, but I will point out a couple of things that, that I found in, in looking at this versus compared with the exception, with the standards. First of all, will it be in the public's health, safety, and welfare interest? Will safety be affected? Will traffic conditions be affected or property values? In my opinion, it won't have any negative effect on any of those. And I feel like they do meet standard number one. Number two, similarly, feel even better about this if it was exclusively for seniors, but we don't expect any problems with litter or lighting or noise that cannot be controlled. When we get to number three, however, I do have some reservations on this one and where I don't feel that it does meet it. And I'm going to cite a couple of other care facilities that are in the Kemper Tech Center, so in the same five-building office park. And that's the Little Miracles Early Childhood School and the Hope Bridge Center for Autism. Both of those came to the Planning Commission with variance requests to, to build fences. And the fences were not part of the development plan for the Kemper Tech Center. And really, in looking at it, very unlikely that a typical office user would request this type of outdoor enclosure. However, because of the nature of, of what each of these organizations does, they did need this, and that has had an effect on the look and the character of the Kemper Tech Center. Another issue is with vehicles that are owned and operated by the nonprofit, I'll say. And here, I'm going to cite Creative Learning Workshop, which is located just down the road at the Kemper Woods Center. They started off in one location in that center and, and later expanded to two locations. They have two different programs, but two locations in that center. And they parked their vehicles in the, in the middle courtyard. And it again is, it's not something that rises to the level of a nuisance, but it does change the character of the office setting to one that have a more mixed service and office setting. Moving on to number four. And this has to do with the aesthetics and will it be detrimental or injuries to the surrounding area, workers or residents? My recommendation on this is that this would meet the standard, provided that the use of temporary signage is restricted, which is also what we did for Little Miracles. And this was based upon some experience with an earlier daycare facility, actually in the same building. And then number five is the, the second of the standards where I feel that, that it is not being met. And that is the adequate public facilities and services test. And the issue here is our emergency medical services. This came up in our staff view, but the similar types of organizations that we do have, that's the, the three that I just mentioned, plus a fourth, which is located on Hamilton Avenue Alliance, that's known as GMR Exceptional Care. All of those have EMS runs and that are far above average for any business, also above average for, say, apartments or residences. And not going to say this is anyone's particular fault, but it's just a nature of, of, of what kind of service they're providing there. The clients of these other organizations tend to be in poorer health and more likely to be disabled to where they are in need of medical attention, sometimes emergency medical attention or transport to the, to the hospital. And that does put a burden on the services. It's not something that the city cannot handle, but if you look at what we have and what we would like to see come in, we don't want to necessarily add to that burden when we are looking at things like having to have another levy on the ballot or at our staffing and, and service levels currently. Aside from that, the other public services are available. Those include water, sewer, telephone broadband, and stormwater drainage. And then the final standard, will it have an effect on vacant land or other proposed developments in the area? So the technical answer to this is no, because it's referring to vacant land and other proposed developments, not necessarily to vacant space that is being offered for lease currently. The Kemper Meadow Center as a whole has a pretty low vacancy rate. All of the single, single-user buildings, and that's the majority of buildings in the center, are occupied. Of the multi-tenant buildings, of which there are four, or multi-tenant developments, this Kemper Tech Center has about a 50% vacancy, and the Kemper Woods Center has about a 30, or about a one-third vacancy. The other two are occupied. So the vacancy rates are, are quite low in the Kemper Meadow Center currently, except for Kemper Tech and Kemper Woods, which is where these other nonprofits are located. It's too much to say that there's a cause and effect there, but I don't feel that locating more service and nonprofit, social service and nonprofit organizations will help with vacancy in the area. That has been our experience. However, and I'm going to back up here. Number six, I'm recommending that they do meet that because it is limited to land and developments. So that's, there is no vacant land in the area. It is essentially built out and there are, and subsequently, there are no proposed developments in the media vicinity. So on that, I based my recommendation and listed some findings that the Planning Commission might include in their decision. And those are listed in my report and also suggested motion. Following the report, I did, I had sent some questions over to the applicants, and then they were gracious enough to answer them. And those answers are included on the next page there, where you can see what the answers are in their own words. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anybody from, well, let's go down to Commissioner questions for, for Chris right now. Let's start with Dr. Button. Do you have any questions for Chris on this? Okay, I noticed you got your mic turned off, Lou, Louis, but I saw your head shake no, so that's okay. Mr. Smith? Dennis, you have your mic turned off also.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Johnson?
Oh, yeah, I have a couple of questions or comments. My concern from the beginning has been this particular complex is primarily supposed to have been professional offices. And it seems that more and more, we're getting away from that over there. And in my opinion, I think we've set up a situation where it's going to make it harder and harder for us to attract professional offices in there if we continue to, you know, if we continue to allow tenants other than professional offices. So, and I, I do know from past experience that we do, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, I don't know that the city is in a position to add to our EMS services and any additional drain on them in order to get the necessary funding to increase those would probably mean having to go to the citizens and say, "We need the money." I don't know that I'm prepared to do that at this point. And I guess as a question, and this would be more, I guess, for the, the, the people who are looking to go in there. If I'm not mistaken, it looks as though, and I would ask them, it, it appears to me that, for what I've seen, that you've not yet paid the first half of your property taxes. So I'd like to know what, you know, what's, when's that's going to happen, or when do you plan on doing that? Because part of that, part of that is what helps to generate off on it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, do you want to have them answer that now? Or do you want to wait till we get done?
We can wait until, we can wait until they, they do speak, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Mayor, you'd like to comment on?
Not at the moment, except to say, you know, I, I think as a commission, we're going to have to start looking much closer at, at special exceptions and look at them not only in addition to a particular business, but in addition to our overall city's development plan. Because they, we, we are getting to the point where we're running into, where the special exceptions that we're granting are already in conflict with the citywide development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Anafuro?
No, I don't have any question.
Thank you. Mr. Bradley?
No further questions.
Okay. I don't really have any questions right at this point in time now. If we have, I think, is it Mr. Misra? Are you going to speak on this today? And if you are, if you'd like to speak now, just give your name, address, and your, your, what you're representing, obviously, the adult daycare.
Yeah, my name is Prakash. It's for 1257 Kemper Meadow Drive. It's not a daycare that we can bring the people on a wheelchair or anything like that. It's like a recreation center. I think we have to understand about the daycare and the recreation center. We don't bring the people on a wheelchair or anything. Our seniors and the disabled people, they come to the facility, they do the activities, indoor activities. And we do have outdoor activities too, that we can take them to the park, or chores, or the temple. But on, in the off daycare center, and that's inside the center, we have in activities, in home activities, like carrom. There's a different game, or ludus, or sign checkers and everything. So I don't understand that it's getting delayed and delayed to get a permit to work on the air, that we have been waiting for too long.
Well, one of the contractors. Just to explain to him a little bit about what-
Could you give us, sir, could you give us your name and who you represent?
Yes, my name's Earl Starr. I was hired as the general contractor to help him modify the building into an I-4. And there's been probably another contractor prior to me. And it's, it's probably been a lot of misunderstanding as to what's, what he's trying to accomplish for the daycare, adult daycare. It's more of a recreational facility for older adults, more so in their culture, where an older family member may have to stay at home alone versus coming into the center and have a little chess or checkers, that sort of thing. It's, it's not really a, a facility that will, will drain EMS. They don't have the type of clients that are totally disabled with may need ventilators or, you know, quick responses for, for, say, heart attacks or things like that. They're just older in their culture, and, and they don't stay at home. So they come into the center to spend time. It, it's not necessarily for a medical reason. And they're actually doing the, the program in a smaller version in one of the buildings, actually 1251, just in a smaller version of it right now, in the same complex that you've already okayed for them to operate. The other building, Mr. Dilly purchased to actually expand and just have a, a, a larger area. And in the larger area, it requires an I-4 setup. And I basically got into this, me and the architect that I use, to help them. And we found out that this was, you know, a misunderstanding as to what they were trying to operate, you know? And probably within the last week, I spoke with council on aging, with who they already have the contract, who oversees the building that they operate here, which is in the same facility. So what they're basically requesting is just an operation that'll be expanded a little bit. They won't require parking because they will have buses where they can go and pick the person up at their residence, bring them here for a few hours, they can have fun, socialize, and then they return them back, so they don't take up a lot of spacing. Now, you'll have some that will require one-on-one help. So there will be some spaces that will be used by employees, but it won't exceed what they have available around the building.
So I, I'd just like to address one thing with you, Mr. Misra and Mr. Starr, is that this is, this is, this is not a, a case that we're looking at or a special exception, where we're looking at exactly, you know, if it's going to be a daycare or a recreation center. What we're looking at here is the overall theme of what that park is supposed to be as far as being an office complex. Now, what has happened in the past, your business really, according to the staff report, doesn't really fall into that office complex type of situation. Now, there has been a special exception given in there on a very limited basis and a limited scale. And we don't want, from what, you know, the reports are, that to have this turn into a more of an adult care or daycare, whatever the possible name could be, as far as the zoning in there. And with the limited amount of space that Forest Park has, I think that's where our, where, where our point is trying to be made from a staff point. Now, obviously, the Commission hasn't voted yet on what they'll do or not do. But I don't think it's a, it's a matter of, of what you're going to do in the building versus what we think should be in the building or what the zoning has. So I think, if we think in those terms, I, you know, I'm a strong proponent of anything that can help people. And, and, and the city of Forest Park has been very, very active in that area and have been, we've been pro places to help adults and help people with handicapping. And we, maybe we've gone too far, I don't know. But, you know, it hits a spot with all of us that we want to help people if we can. But we also have to look out for the other businesses, the other property owners, what the zoning was meant when the council voted and developed that park back in the, in the eighties. And it was supposed to be office, and it was supposed to be upscale office, which we actually won national awards for. But I think that's, that's where we're coming from here. And I don't think it has anything to do with you or your business or what we're trying to do to help people. It has to do with what is the proper zoning for that area before you give a special exception.
Okay. If I could add-
Just one second. Is there anything else, Mr. Misra or Mr. Starr, you'd like to make any comments about?
No, I think that's probably-
No.
Okay. Is it Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir.
Can you give us your name and what you're going to speak about?
Yeah, as you heard, heard from Mr. Starr, I'm Vince Terry. I'm an architect. I'm supporting the developer in moving into the new space here in the office complex, addressed at 4551 South Shore Drive. Glad to hear you say that you're looking out to help people, because I think that's what this development is all about. I would ask the council to be open-minded in how they see this opportunity to expand development in Forest Park and consider the amount of vacancy that is there as well as the, I think, the climate that we're moving into. You know, as baby boomers are getting older, I think you've, may have heard of the term, the sandwich generation, which I'm in. Sandwich being that we're taking care of kids and we're taking care of parents. And, and I think you've already have allowed the childcare to be a part of this development in close proximity, which if I was working in the area, I'd feel great to be able to drop my child off, work eight hours, pick my child up, and go home. Well, now, you, you have a, a climate and a group of people that are taking care of their parents, and they're older. Some of them are handicapped. But in that aging, they need a break as well. And this is a soft recreation place for them to come, spend time, then go home, two to three hours, from what I understand, is all that they're asking for, for a client. And then some of them may be escorted in. So in my opinion, within this complex, you're going to increase visibility for existing businesses and future businesses by having this traffic. Listening to the report that Mr. Anderson gave, he actually gave green lights on four out of six items. So I think that's, it's a positive way to see that this is very much a possible opportunity for special inspections. I'd, I'd like to see the council allow the development team to come back with a site plan to show EMS routes to the building and back. I do agree that this is not going to be a high EMS zone. I don't believe we're entering into a clinic situation for this particular group that wants to use this as soft recreation. However, understanding the building codes as I do, you should have a right and, and a path for EMS vehicles in case the emergency arises. And in actuality, the buildings weren't allowed to be built without it. So I'm sure that there's appropriate routing to this building for paramedics and fire, because that's the, the law of the state. I would like to prove that it works by providing a site plan for your council to show that indeed, item five out of the six won't cause a hazard for the rest of the office complex. And with that, you know, I'd like to turn, turn my time back over and hopefully, again, ask for open-minded opportunities for development in Forest Park and envision this as a collaborative development of business and care for all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
Mr. Aronson?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Again, I, I want, I want to try to make something perfectly clear. If I set aside everything, everything else that's been said regarding EMS and all of that, my point is simply this. Make no mistake, Forest Park is not opposed to providing, to providing for any care, any care agencies. What we're saying is, this is not the place for it. It's not zoned for that, it's not built for that. What we, what we want to do, we simply want to have places in the areas where they were zoned to be. It's that simple. Nothing else matters here. And I think our decisions have to be based on that. Because, you know, otherwise, what's, what's the point in having specific zones for specific facilities? And also, I'd like to, I did ask a question earlier about, about the situation of the property taxes. And I didn't get an answer to that.
I think so. We have to see that.
We have to see that.
Mr. Star speaking uh on behalf of a client. Um. The way things are transitioning today and we're seeing that more and more people are staying home and working from home. We're also seeing companies that are basically starting to look at that as a. A long-term resource for them to use and not have um. The overhead of having office space. So this would actually be an opportunity to allow Forest Park to. Gain some property tax income for the city. Um if there is something that's owed by the client, I'm quite sure that they can rectify that situation. Um and it would give an uh basically another income for the city. You know, um I'm not sure what that would be in resource to um him owning the building, but. It's still a climate right now where with this Corona, um we're seeing spikes across the nation. There's going to still be some hesitancy of returning workers back to office spaces. And with.
I hate to interrupt you there, but I think, you know, we've got a. We're really talking about two different things here and. It's really boils down to a zoning issue and what we feel fits into that issue. We. We understand the economics of it and what's happening in the country. If you have anything that you'd like to say specifically about the zoning issue. Then, you know, I'll take your comments. Otherwise, I'm going to move on and see if anybody else has any more comments.
Mr. Chair.
I mean.
Mr. Anderson, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Uh yeah, I'd like to maybe hopefully clarify um probably two points. The first is um. A special exception is is what it is. Because rather than just um, you know, a use can be classified as as permitted in all cases or prohibited in all cases. Or the special exception, which is what we have, it's kind of in between. Um and one, one of the reasons, and it's stated right there in the ordinance, um. One of the reasons for classifying something as a special exception is that it may need to be limited. In terms of the concentration of uses, the location. Of them and the overall number in the city. Um and that is where um we need to take a look at just what the conditions that we are in. Um as we evaluate this special exception. So just wanted to make that. Clear that that really does extend to it. It's it's looking um. Not only at the the application, but also at the conditions in the area. Um and then the second thing, um and maybe if Mary can correct me if I'm wrong. Um I think one of the reasons that that he was asking that question about the 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 first half property tax bill is. Um that is what supports our fire department and EMS services. And if the. Property is going to be tax exempt, um then that's just a matter of of something to. It's a piece of information that can be made part of the evaluation. It was not clear. Um when I looked at the auditor's property tax record, if it would be, or if it was just a matter of that. Um that the bill hadn't paid been paid yet, but um I and again, Mayor, if I'm if I'm wrong in my uh.
That's correct. That that's correct.
Yeah, okay. And that's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I can't, I can't speak to the back taxes, but I I do think the zoning. If uh in a it's it's a non-prohibited zoning. Uh as Mr. Anderson mentioned, um it's not that this use is not allowed. It is that is under review, special inspection, uh special exemption review. So so it's not like we're asking to put something in that's not allowed. But we're asking for special permission. And I and I just think I wanted to add that clarity. If if I'm if I'm misspeaking, Mr. Anderson, let me know, but I I think the. The option for this use is prohibited. If council approves.
If if they go to approve, it will be forbidden. For that location.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak about this subject?
Yes, um how many employees are are going to be in this place and where are the parking areas? Are they going to have a separate one?
Well, how many employees?
There will be around uh, we have a three different type of entity uh programs. Uh one is for uh two is for home health and one is for uh areas, uh daycare centers. And we have altogether, we have around twenty-five to thirty employees and we do have more than seventy parking lot there.
Yeah, well, you said you had to go and pick them up, uh what? Do you have buses? They're going to stay there or what?
Yeah, we do have a buses for the uh daycare and we do have a home healthier. Uh and we have around thirty employees altogether for home health and areas.
Well, that's all. That's a lot of employees now. Uh depends on the type of how many employees is going to be attending to uh. An adult daycare. How much good care do the person need?
Uh. We might be need around twenty-five to thirty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Hey, are there any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, um the only question I had is is uh Mr. Anderson wrote you a letter. Uh on August seventeenth, Mr. Mishra. And on the item, you, he asked you number one. Um the floor plan shows the two large rooms in the build that looks like maximum occupancy number. Is this also? Your client capacity or are those numbers different? And your answer was. The two large rooms are the activities area for adult day services. We shall have approximately sixty to seventy people at a given time, which includes forty clients and thirty employees. And I would assume based on some other questions and answers down there that the clients stay in there from. Three to four hours a day. And then they, I guess they move in and out, so roughly you're going to have half the clients moving in and out every. Um are you going to have, you know, roughly forty clients moving in and out every four hours? Um which means there could be eighty clients a day in there plus the thirty employees. My question to you is, how big is this facility square footage wise?
Uh Vince, do you remember? No. One thousand.
Fourteen thousand square feet. I think fourteen thousand square feet.
Fourteen thousand square feet.
Fourteen thousand?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um you know, with having, you know, eighty clients a day and thirty employees. That's going to be a lot of traffic coming in and out of a facility. Um. But I mean, I ju- I just wanted to clarify that and and make, you know, we all had this and we've read it, so I just wanted to. To ask you that question, how big the facility was. Okay, moving on, since there are no other comments about this item on the work session, then we'll move on to. F P D two zero dash zero zero seven development plan for Dollar General at six thirty-three Northland Boulevard. Mr. Anderson, would you like to present your report? Yeah, turn the mic on.
Sorry about that. Um. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh this is an item that was um held over from the August Planning Commission meeting. Um it was tabled along with some uh changes for the applicant to make on the plan. Um and accordingly, I've I've revised my staff report um to reflect that. Um and then also um some input from the city manager, uh but. For ease of 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 reading, I've highlighted the sections that are new. And so um. Basically, uh the I will comment, the applicant has been very responsive um in in making changes um and. Has uh made most of those that are and are reflected in the um. Revised site plan, um which follows the the staff report. Um and then following that is are the revised building elevations. Um and and they were revised from the from the prior meeting um to have the same treatment on all sides. Um the the um. The split face C M U um uh pilasters or 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 vertical elements. Um and then the dark um decorative shutters on the front um that are suggested for windows, although this building. Um because of the operation of the building does not have windows aside from those those that are um at the front doors. They changed the the pylon sign to a monument sign. However, they uh still show a wall sign on the building um. It without a master signage plan. We only can allow one sign. Um master signage plan could be um approved by the planning commission. It just. It it sometimes happens after a a development plan review. The um in finishing the changes here, the the site plan was reoriented with north of the top. Um and then clarified to show where the um. Southern curb line will go um between the uh. Dollar General property and the uh private drive that that goes uh behind it. So that is uh pretty much a summary of the uh changes. Uh there added also added the um landscape beds on um. The area between the sidewalk that's adjacent to the building and the building itself. Um that is shown as a landscaped area. We didn't have any planting detail, although we'll say that. I didn't necessarily request any either. So uh that um I think sums up all of the the changes. And. What I want to discuss next is um the city's redevelopment plan. You know, the city has um been working on this redevelopment plan in terms of implementing it for um nearly twelve years. And um. I'm the one that that put it together, quite familiar with it. Uh but um specifically for the Northland Business District. Some of the things that that city has done in terms of investment in the area are the property acquisitions um across the street. And uh demo demolition of of um vacant buildings um in order to keep up the appearance of the area. Um the Northland Streets gave improvements for which we applied for two large federal grants and received and did about. Over a million dollars worth of uh street repair and rehabilitation and enhancement in the area. Um we also constructed a city parking lot on North six eighty Northland and recently acquired property. Um from Magnum Machine for it's a for a future city green um in terms of. Uh supporting the shopping center um that is remaining. And uh so one of the things that we we look at with the redevelopment plan on redeveloping property, which this is a proposal to do. Is will this contribute or not? Um and this is where um I just feel that. This development. Is it is not the right development for Northland Boulevard. Um and I'm going to cite a a couple of reasons. Uh the first is that um. This is a bank currently um a a property that has a vacant uh bank building on it that we would. Much, I mean, we would prefer that it not be vacant, that the banks still be there or another bank want to go in. I don't think that anybody on the staff has any. Illusions about what is happening with the whole world of of walk-in retail type. Um service and shopping. And banks with large lobbies and lots of offices and um and a row of six tellers are probably a thing of the past. But in looking at what would come after it, um the city has not been seeking additional retail either. Um we incentivize the Magnum Machine property in part to take some retail square footage offline. Permanently. Uh so that we're not struggling to meet uh, you know, with with vacancy rates that 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 are chronically high. Because we just have too much square footage of retail space. The second point is the the site arrangement, which um when we first reviewed this um in July. I had mentioned that um I wanted the applicant to look at um. Turning the building ninety degrees and and positioning it closer um to Northland, having the parking on the side. Then the front entrance would also be on the side, so it would still be convenient to the parking. Um for a couple of different reasons, that didn't work out in terms of. Dollar General and the store that they wanted to build and the number of spaces that they needed and turning trucks in and out of there. And normally, um that's something that. You know, that we would try to work with. And we have. Um however, um I'll point out that this building is um. Not is sitting farther back from the road with parking in front of it. Um than the other uh properties that front directly on Northland Boulevard and I'm referring to the properties that go from the Cruz Inn. Over to McDonald's. Uh so you have the Cruz Inn, you have Firestone, you have La Rosa's. You have this site and then McDonald's. Um all of the other sites are um. You know, roughly equal distance from the road. Um and all of the other sites, although some have some parking in front, they don't have all of their parking in front. Um and so that um in terms of what you would call urban design. Is this uh property would be a departure from those uh that general pattern of development. The third reason um is. This, we refer to Dollar General as a small box retailer as opposed to say a big box like like Walmart. And um. In the Northland area, we have had Dollar General before um in the Northland area, so. Um they were in inline tenant at the Forest Park Plaza Shopping Center uh probably over fifteen years ago. Currently, that same shopping center, it has Dollar Gen- or or Family Dollar competitor um. As a tenant. And that tenant used to be in the shopping center that got redeveloped by Magna. So. City has small box retail um and we have what we consider um enough of it. Um and in terms of of residents being able to shop at Dollar General. We have two locations that are just right outside the city limits, one on Hamilton Avenue and one in on Witten Road in Green Hills. Um and then two additional uh locations that are a little bit further outside of the city, but still within um easy driving distance. So for residents on all parts of the city, the the they do have access to this store. And then um. For the final point, I'm just gonna the and. I have tried to to review this, keeping in mind. What people can do and what maybe they can't do. And so. What we found, though, is that. The company itself, I think, if they had their own preferences, and I'm not going to speak for them beyond that, but this is my impression. Is that they and that's based upon other locations of the store that are in place right now. That they. Prefer to do minimal site enhancements. And so we had to. Go back and say make changes just to get some, you know, some planning bets to break up the the expansive pavement that led right up to. Solid wall with nothing in between. And then the the final thing is that even with these changes, we're still not getting, I think, the best that that Dollar General can provide. And included a picture that I took up in Cleveland while I was visiting my parents over Labor Day weekend. Wasn't seeking it out, just happened to see it. And it's in an area, it's in Euclid, Ohio, which is a suburb of Cleveland. This is an area that. Is got some striking similarities to the Northland location, including being located in front of a manufacturing business. In an area that has a mix of manufacturing, retail and restaurant. And it's not that Euclid is a more upscale community than Forest Park. If you look at the. Median income numbers, let's say, happen to do today. Forest Park has a median household income of about 55,000 and Euclid has a median household income of about 37,000. So. Those are the reasons that. I I just think we should say no and. And 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 move on and. That is my recommendation. The suggested motion is still in as it was with the changes. That have been submitted. I I took some of those off as conditions, but. The four suggested congested conditions. That motion could be stated as such and then voted on either yes or no according to whether you think this should be passed or not. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Dr. Button, any questions?
I think he's muted, isn't he?
Yeah. Do you have any questions, Louis? Okay, no questions, I see. Okay, we'll move on to Mr. Smith. Any questions? Mr. Smith, any questions?
No question at all.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Johnson.
And not not necessarily any question, but just just a couple of comments. Again, I I would make the 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 same points here. I think we, you know, people need to look at things. In my mind, let me start again. So in my mind, these things are being done backwards. It's almost like when. Somebody wants to build, say, somebody wants to build a a room on the house and turn their garage into a a room, a bedroom. All too often, what happened, what what comes before us is the person goes and builds the room. Then he comes to us afterwards and say, you know, I I'd like to get a permit to to do this, and I've already done it. If you're going to. Buy some property or you want, you know, you want to do do something with some property that you're already on, it it would. It would seem to me that you would take a look at. The requirements that are there before you buy it and then decide that I want to put something there that may not fit. Or that doesn't fit the rules and regulations. In in this case. I I my real problems are numbered. From the beginning, when I looked at the at this building that that they were looking at putting up.
Mayor Johnson, if you can hear us, you froze up.
He's probably going to have to reconnect.
Okay. Let's go on down to. Dr. Aniforo, while we wait for the mayor to come back on, any comments?
Um, well, I think the mayor is back.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, we got you now.
What I'm saying, you know, I I think, I think when I first looked at this, I thought this. You know, they have a set amount of money that they want to spend. And but they want us to accept what that set amount of money will buy. Well, that's not how it should work. We have standards. Either you can, you will meet those standards or you can't put it there. To me, it's that simple. And, you know, I don't think Forest Park should, we we need to be in the business of taking something less and you're going to build somewhere else. I I've been thinking this all along, but when I saw the pictures of the building in in in. Suburban Cleveland and Euclid, I thought. If they can do that for that building in that area, why can't they do the same thing here? So that that was, that's the big reason I can't support you.
Hey, Dr. Aniforo.
Yeah, um, my mine is really a question for Chris. I I don't know if. It's possible. I don't know the protocol. Is it possible for Chris to discuss some of these? Issues. With the client before they come to us. Is it possible? Because, again, I think I've said this before. I, you know, I want us to avoid the impression. That some of the clients may be. Fuming that we are, you know. Trying to obstruct what they are, you know, obstruct their project in in Forest Park. So that's why I'm asking, the protocol. Is it possible for Chris to share some of these issues that's being raised with the client? In his office. Before they come to us.
Chris, Mr. Anderson, you want to answer that?
Sure. The. The answer to that is yes. And it it does take place. I will say on this particular. Application. The. Opinion I have had of the development plan. Has evolved and and what I mean by that is. On first hearing of this. I wasn't. I mean, I basically, I wasn't, you know, they're saying. You're going to have a lot of problems and and the answer is going to be no, which if I think that's true, I usually tell people that. Because I don't want people wasting their time and money on something that won't get anywhere. And then that. Moved on in terms of. You know, my my stance on this to, I think, that. What was originally submitted was not, so that was without seeing any plans, really, that my first impression was communicated that. On seeing the the plan and the the initial building type that was. Part, you know, that was was planned by the applicant. That change to know this building is not, you know. That's not something that that we can accept and. And then that moved on to, let's see what we can do to to improve this plan to the extent possible. And I do try to be a realist and if something is beyond. A person or 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 company's ability to do, that's fine and and we can take that into consideration. So it moved into that and then. In in the final analysis, looking at now two improvements to the to the building plans. Just don't feel, I don't feel. Confident that that Dollar General. You know, I just feel like we we had to do a lot of asking or, you know, the planning commission, really. To to get what we have and then kind of see that and and I and to be honest, I did not go combing Ohio for the best Dollar General store. I it was a very much a happenstance to see that, but it was sort of eye opening for me. That. And I don't mean this in any insult to anybody, but I I do feel that sometimes we get this or other developments where. The aim is to design it down to whatever our minimum requirements are. And. I really feel like, and particularly on Northland Boulevard, that we should be getting their best rather than than. What our minimum might have been in a code that. That dates to 1986, it's been amended, but but still. You know, if the if they have the state of the art, why aren't we getting the state of the art? And then just in terms of, again, those other points, site arrangement. You know, we looked at it, it's, you know, sorry, our trucks can't make those turns to get in there. And it's like. All right, well, maybe that's not the right development for that location then. Because we can't make, we can't make changes that would. That would help address those concerns. And so I would say that that was the final evolution of. My stance on this development. And. But to answer the general question. Yes, and there's no, there is nothing in the protocol that prevents us from. Talking to applicants and working things out. As you know, I usually don't have a recommendation to deny. I think our general stance on the staff's part, and I know I've noticed it with the planning commission as well. Is to try to work towards an approval. But sometimes we get to a point where to say. That, you know, this is the other way you can vote, you know, that they are recommending that you vote to deny. So I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, it 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 answers the question very well. And I appreciate that. But, you know, my concern really is. I know how much the businesses that are coming to the board, I know how much time they've put into it. Some of them may have already spent. Money getting ready for coming to the, you know, before they come to the board. And I I honestly feel bad. Turning them down. I I can understand if we say tweak this a little bit, do this. And then, you know, the project will be approved. I I feel bad saying no. And then that's why I'm asking, could this be avoided? Could it be avoided where we have to say no to somebody who put in so much time and resources into a project? That they are really hoping will take off and then for us to come in and shoot it down, I feel bad about it. And that's why I was asking, is there any way we can avoid saying no to somebody? Like I said, I don't mind us making suggestions on how they can tweak. Or improve. Whatever project it is they are working on so that they will get the green light to go ahead. That's that's okay with me, but. If we can find a way of Mr. Anderson working with the client. Especially if, you know, Mr. Anderson. Knows that in the long run, it's not going to be a go.
Well, let me let let me answer that for him. I don't want to put Chris in that situation. That's not his job. His job is to, you know, to walk through what the requirements are. And then it is, that's why we have the planning commission is for us to hear the presentation. And then for us to make a decision and and keep in mind that our decision is not is not the final because it can be appealed. To the full council, but Mr. Aniforo, there's no way that we can set up a situation where we're never going to have to say no. That's not, that's not realistic, that's not a possibility.
And if I could add, a mayor, if you're if you're finished.
Yes.
My recommendation is just that, it's a recommendation. And I I kept that motion as as a positive motion with the knowledge that that the planning commission might disagree with me entirely. Or in part or or whatever. I mean, that's. Part of the part of the job and as much as I would like planning commissions to. To always endorse my thoughts on these things, sometimes I recommend one thing and the planning commission will go another direction. And that that is fine. That's what the mayor was just referring to. That's why you are the ones that get a vote. And you're applying the wisdom of the community. One, this is one reason that we have volunteer planning commissions to oversee things such as planning. Comprehensive plans and and zoning ordinances. So. In terms of what you. Commissioner Aniforo do with your vote. You could say, hey, Chris, I don't agree and I think that that we should try to accommodate them and here's a motion that that I'm going to make. And that that would be fine. That certainly that would be in order and certainly wouldn't bother me. So I I don't don't feel any hesitancy about applying your own. Knowledge and opinion to this. My recommendation. Is made. Mainly, it's my knowledge of the community, my my knowledge of the zoning ordinance and and general planning practices. So you have that in terms of that's intended to assist rather than to say you must.
Chris, I think I think we got, you know, the understanding here. Dr. Aniforo, do you have any other questions or comments?
Not at this point.
Okay, Mr. Bradley.
No further questions.
No further questions, okay. I'm kind of. Chris, I'm kind of back and forth on this a little bit that. Is it? Is it the fact that no matter what type of building that we were to get from Dollar General? Whether it's the one that looks like the one in Euclid, Ohio, or or does that make a difference whether we would want them there? Or is it the fact based on, from what I gather, looking at the site plan, we're trying to. Put 10 pounds of sand in a in an eight pound bag. Do we, is that what we're looking at? Is it the fact that the development is not something that. Really is appropriate there, given the design standards and the way it is, or is it just the fact that if we were to get the the Euclid building? Would that be something that we're, that would that would go and we would be willing to approve? Or or at least the commission would be willing to vote on it in that respect or or again, is it just one that? It doesn't fit the plan development there?
It's a little bit of both and and sorry not to answer that with a with a straight up yes or no. And and sorry not to answer that with a with a straight up yes or no. The I believe that one could design a building that you know, that that we would be proud of and that would attract other development and that sort of thing to the area, and we would not mourn the loss too much of the bank building. And Dollar General could locate in the corridor, say they went and occupied an existing building without, you know, tearing it down and and reworking the site. In that scenario, that would not come to the planning commission because they are they are a permitted use. And so then they would be on Northland in that scenario, and that would be fine as well. What we have is a combination of a reworking of the site and and the the I call it the building tenant, although I think they're planning to own it. The building a building tenant that that it it's 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 almost like a solution in search of a problem in terms of shopping options for Forest Park and Forest Park residents. And so that is the whole question of is this the right development for the area? And and when I say that, I don't think it's the right to wrong for the area. I've had that feeling for a while, I I shared it with the applicant in early August, I believe. And not as a comment for them to take and necessarily do something with, but to just be frank about what my feelings were. And in terms of the ten pounds of sand in an eight pound bag, there is a little bit of that. However, I I do believe that that is addressable. It's again, though, a matter of can it be addressed by Dollar General? Because they have a certain way of doing business and and I respect that in terms of bringing trucks in and out of the property. One could design the site so the trucks could move in and still orient the building with parking on the side. But it wouldn't be the same layout that that is the basic layout of this development. And but I'll let the the planning commission and, you know, can can decide on that. It's not an easy decision either way, really. And on balance, my recommendation is to deny. However, if if planning commission feels differently or that the concerns that I raised are addressable or or what have you, then I think we have a way to get at least a decent development from Dollar Dollar General. And I'm sure that the store will will do fine. I that I yet to see a Dollar General that doesn't have cars in the parking lot. So there is that. And it's not something that we would necessarily worry about, an undercapitalized business going in and and getting their head above water and or below water and and being out of business in a year. I don't think that's a worry at all. So the those are the two things that basically it's the combination of them redeveloping the site and redeveloping it in a way that I feel does not contribute to the Northland overall redevelopment areas. And also the fact that there's, I don't think there is any need for additional small box retail in the area. We have, there are enough choices in terms of shopping, including other Dollar General stores.
Hello.
Hey. Thank you, Chris. I have a
meeting.
Sherman, you wanna you wanna put yours on mute, Sherman?
Talk to you later. Thanks for checking on me.
The the only questions or the concerns, I have all the same concerns that everyone has expressed, except for banks aren't opening those satellite offices much anymore. The fact that 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 land is sat empty for so long. And if you notice, there's a I don't know, the only thing I could call, and that's probably not the correct terminology, is that there's a big ditch in front of the property and a big ditch to the east side of the property that's gonna prohibit some type of development there, or it's gonna be expensive to develop, to fill that in and grade it and compact it. But I mean, it's it's not the greatest site in the world when you given those things into consideration. But I think if if we feel like it's gonna be developed sometime in some way, I think we can rest assured it'll never be another bank with the way the industry is going, and and I'm involved with banking. And we're just not opening up the offices anymore. We're condensing the offices or getting rid of them. And most and more and more on online banking, I mean, how many of us go to the bank and deposit a check hardly anymore when you take a picture and you don't even have to go see them? So I think the thought of us holding out for something like that, maybe far and few between. But I also think that just because there's not a bank coming in there that we shouldn't lower our standard or we should lower our standards to bring in the best possible development that can be there. And with that said, I don't know if that site is conducive for a Dollar General store or not. But I mean, it has to be to the way that we would want it in in the city of Forest Park and it complements our our district there. I do know a lot of people shop at those places, so it's obviously something that appeals and it serves a purpose. So I think, you know, I'm I'm still on the fence on this. I'd like to hear, I guess, is it Mr. Zolki, you're gonna speak about that today? So if you could speak about that to us and just tell us your name again, the address.
Yeah, yeah. So my name's Andrew Zofki, address is nine four six one Kenwood Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, four five two four two. You know, thanks for allowing me to speak tonight again. I think I've I've heard a lot of comments and I I probably have a lot to say, and I'd like to address as many as possible, but I'll try and keep it keep it somewhat short here, but you know, kind of starting from the top, as you guys know, this is the third time I've been to this meeting for this development. And I'll say it's been kind of a difficult process and kind of to Dr. Inafer's point, you know, some of this this level of feedback I haven't gotten until the day of or the day before these meetings. So I I've kind of had to be reactive, but you know, based on a very preliminary conversation I've had, and it was Chris and then the economic development. Can't remember his name at this time, but you know, this was taken favorably, and and this kind of sparked our our interest and and kind of like, you know, let's let's do this, let's go forward with it. The next step were these meetings. So, you know, to that point, all all we've really done is is provide and revise what's being asked of us on on these plans and this elevation. You know, and and here we are, the third meeting, and and again, we we revise and provide what was asked of us. So to hear kind of some of these comments, it's a little, I guess, frustrating that it's it's kind of catching me off guard. But so anyway, a couple of things I do want the planning commission to understand. Our our site is zoned is is zoned properly, so our our use, Dollar General's use is permitted on this property. Heard of the zoning code. And we do, we do meet the minimum. And in fact, we exceed the code requirements for the zone specifically with our proposed development. So I I want to make sure that's understood. You know, it seems like a lot of the comments were that we were providing something less than that or that, you know, the zoning was a question maybe, but our use is a permitted use for this zone. We have done a lot of due diligence to this to this point. We've, you know, we're we're excited about this development. Our company is is, we want to invest in Forest Park. We think the store will do great here. We've done a lot of lot of due diligence to this point. We've we've done geotech reports to get soil samples. We've done environmental research on the site. You know, we've we're under contract on the site to purchase it with this bank. You know, the bank's been banking it for a while. So, you know, as Chris mentioned, as part of the comprehensive plan is to demolish the old vacant buildings and and build new. You know, looking at this plan, if you if you compare this proposed development to some of the existing buildings, you know, in in my opinion, at least, and and I I put a lot of stock in that, having an architectural background myself, but you know, this will be an improvement to a lot of the surrounding buildings. And and new development sparks sparks brand new and and further development in in areas like this in in my experience. So, you know, I think it's it's all a very positive thing. And kind of like what I said earlier, you know, economic development made comments that, you know, this will be good for the area, the people here will be able to shop here. And and I can say that Dollar General feels the same way, or else they would not be willing to invest in this specific area. You know, they think they'll be very successful. You know, we do too, so we're investing with them as well. You know, and it kind of to touch on, I guess, some specific comments that I did hear. No, and and no, no specific order, I guess, you know. Parking in front of the site, you know, that's in front of the building, sorry, that's that's very typical of of retail use, again, a permitted use for the site. And when you can, you know, compare it to some of the existing buildings nearby that maybe the parking is oriented differently. You know, those are different uses. You know, there's there's restaurants, there's McDonald's, there's other other uses that have their own requirements for how they run the business. And and ours being retail, parking is almost always in any retail building you can find anywhere, almost always in front of the site or in front of the building. You know, kind of looking at some of my other notes here. Yeah, I you know, I think those are kind of the the main points, but so, you know, again, I just want to leave you with this, you know, we are we are zoned properly. This use is permitted. We've been, we've provided everything that's been asked of us to to date. And then, you know, I'm I'm caught off guard the day of when there's, you know, I guess, unfavorable opinions about about this. So, you know, we're excited about this development, and and I really hope you guys take all what I've said into consideration for this, and and we really think this will be a great new development for this site. So I think that's kind of all I have to say, but happy to answer any other questions. You know, it seems like there's a lot of a lot of questions out there, so happy to make myself available.
Okay. Dr. Button, do you have any questions for Mr. Zofki? Okay. Mr. Smith? Okay, Mayor Johnson?
I did not hear you respond to or or make any comment regarding the differences in the story that is being built here and the one that I saw in in Euclid, because they're very different in in terms of appearance. And when I'm looking at at putting up businesses or buildings, what they look like means a lot to me.
Mr. Zofki?
Yeah, you know, I'm not personally familiar with that building. We did not develop that one. I'm not familiar with the local zoning requirements there, but if I had to guess, I would say, you know, at a high level, and I would say preliminarily, when when we do this level of research, we we review the code. We make sure that we will meet the code. And, you know, that that code specifically for what that building is, and again, I'm not familiar with the code or what a building is, but that's probably the code requirements, the zoning code requirements, say you have, you know, X level of brick on the building or X level of of eaves on the building or glass. You know, every every jurisdiction is is very different. You know, and and just to reiterate my point, you know, we do meet the 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 code. In fact, we 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 definitely exceed the code for this use on the site. Now, again, I've I've provided what's been asked of me. I've I've third time increased the the treatment of the building based on what was asked of me. And again, it's and I'm kind of caught off guard to hear that, you know, there's more more to be desired, I guess. You know, that's all I can do is 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 respond to what's being asked of me. And, you know, I feel like we've been patient with that. We do have a a timeline that we have to adhere to, just like any other development. And this is meeting number three. So, you know, hopefully that answers your question, Mr. Mayor, but unfortunately, I'm not I'm not personally familiar with that building in Cleveland.
Okay. Dr. Inafero, any questions?
No.
Okay, Mr. Bradley?
No.
Okay. Mr. Zofki, I I feel your frustration and and I sometimes things happen the way they do, but this is, to me, is a a very focal point for the for the the city of Forest Park, being on Northland and the amount of money that we've put into that area with buying buildings and taking them down and everything that we've done to that, we're trying to to make that more of a jewel and bring it back and shine it up again. But we did ask you, I did ask you last time we met, that I wanted to see more of a detail on the rear of the building. And I see a detail where there's now there's ephesus and I believe some split face block on the back, but really know how that lane was gonna be addressed or anything, at least on the plans, I couldn't see it. So I mean, there are some things that obviously maybe we don't like to tell you what the rules of the game are and then change them at the end. Sometimes things change and in turn the rules change. So I mean, this is not normally what happens, but then again, this isn't a normal site that normally comes up either. So I mean, with that, I think everybody is a little bit concerned and wary about how long it's time we put on this, but it's also something that we'd rather do it right in the beginning and know the rules of the game and know everything that we have to do before it comes to the end of the game and there's a problem. So it's something we work on, Mr. Anderson's good at working on these things. And I just think when certain things come up, we have to address them, and and again, I'd rather address them now than address them later on. But I I have a a a question for you, Mr. Zofki. If if this commission, and I'm not saying they will because I don't know what the vote will be, but if they came back and said, you bring us a building like the one in Euclid and you work with Chris on on, you know, positioning it right, and with the understanding that you can't do certain things because of the truck turnaround, are you willing to do that? Is Dollar General willing to do that? Are they willing to make a building with with brick? And and I think I'm not sure what other stuff was on that building, block and brick. And and I mean, it doesn't look to me like it's a extremely expensive items that need to be added to this building to make it look like Euclid. I mean, are you, and I don't know if you can even answer that question, Mr. Zofki?
Again, I I'm not familiar with that building specifically, so I, you know, I don't know are three side, are all four sides treated the same or is there, you know, I don't I don't know specifically what that building looks like. So I guess I don't know what the expectation is, you know. We have, I can say we have worked with Chris to this point, and we've provided what's been asked to this point. And and it seems like every time I I'm at these meetings, they they there's there's more that's asked or something that's different or opinions change. You know, I'm I'm trying to conform to what's being asked of me. And I I feel like I have done that. And, you know, just to, again, address any of your comments, the 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 rear of the building has been treated since the last meeting to meet to to match the other three sides of the building that were previously treated. So so we did did update that, and we do show the curb line behind the back of the building. That was not previously there, so that those changes have been made, again, because they were asked of us and and, you know, I I I've been willing to work with with Chris on on the building finishes. And, you know, I that's, I don't see any reason why I wouldn't continue to do that. So I that's kind of a long-winded answer to your question, I guess, but.
Mr. Zofki, you you've mentioned a tie, you're on a timer. What could you tell us what that timeline? What could you tell us what that timeline is?
Well, there's a development timeline. We're under contract on the land. And there's, if you're, I don't want to get too much in the details of.
Well, I'll be asking, I'm asking for the purposes of, of, for our purposes in terms of what we do, whether we do something tonight or whether we do something at our next meeting. So, that's why, you know, that, that would tell me what, knowing what your timeline is, would tell me what I, what we need to do right now or later.
Well, we're kind of at a point where we're ready to submit for our building permits through, through Forest Park for, for review. So, I was hopeful that at tonight's meeting, we could get the approval on our zoning here and then move forward with our full project design and, and get permitted so we can start construction, really. You know, I, I would say if we, if this extended out another month, it would really make things extremely difficult for us to fit within that timeframe that we have.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments made, the commissioners for Mr. Zofki? Is there anybody else speaking that's online with us about the Dollar General development?
I'm Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yes.
I can brief, I'll be obvious, brief as possible. Including that you could picture, I was not necessarily saying that that was something that is part of our code or anything like that.
I was in a Zoom meeting, what's the. You know, I was going to call you anyway. I'll call you back when this is over.
You know, there, there are developments where, you know, people bring in a high quality at the start. And they don't wait to see what, you know, is put into as a condition or, or that sort of thing. And not to relitigate all of that, but just to be clear that all I was doing that for was just to illustrate that more is possible. Not that I asked for more in August, but that more is possible. And then the second thing in terms of, because Mr. Zofki mentioned due diligence, the, the notes on the plan that he submitted, and they're at the bottom, that, you know, state that this is not had. And I can refer to it, if you'll bear with me for a second. Prepared without benefit of title opinion, deed restriction or survey. And that building in sight, sign locations, square footage and type are subject to change pending on all state and city ordinances or deed restrictions. To me, that, that is, it, in the way that it's stated, the way that's written on the plan indicates that this is really quite preliminary. There's other things to be looked into that don't have to do with the city that may cause changes. So, I'm just going to point that out. And then that, that basically concludes what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
If I could, if I could kind of respond to that. So, I will say that's, that's a, a very old comment that is, makes our site plans at a preliminary stage. We have done ALTA surveys. We have pulled title and reviewed title on this. And that's all been factored in. And Chris, I'm happy to email you our, our ALTA survey showing everything. But we, we have done that level of due diligence. That's just an old note that shouldn't have made the plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm going to close the work session now. And I'm going to move at 8:36 PM to the Planning Commission meeting. Mrs. Westendorf, or I'll call it to order with Mrs. Westendorf, will you call the roll, please? Turn the mic on.
Mr. Aronson?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Dr. Button?
He's acknowledged, he's here.
Okay, Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Dr. Anaforo?
Yeah.
And Mr. Brown has to be excused.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Brown?
Slow move.
Second motion.
It's been moved in second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, Mr. Brown's been excused. Has everybody read the minutes of August 11th, 2020? And are there any additions or changes? Hearing no additions or changes, we'll accept the minutes as written. We'll go down for the commissioners' reports. I'll start out, Dr. Button, do you have a report? Okay, no report. Mr. Smith, do you have a report?
No report.
No report. Mayor Johnson?
No report.
Dr. Anaforo?
No report.
Mr. Bradley?
No report.
Okay, I have no report either. Moving down to the director's report, Mr. Anderson, do you have a report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, I do have, I submitted a written report with the planning commission packet. I don't really have anything to add to that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson on his report? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move right to communications from the public. If addressing the commission, please wait for the chair to recognize you. State your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes. This meeting will be recorded for ease of transcription and will be broadcast by Waycross Community Media. Is there anybody who would like to speak from the public? Is there anyone who would like to speak from the public? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move along. We're going to move to new business. Item A, FPD 20-003, special exception, adult daycare, 1257 Kemper Meadow Drive. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair? I will move to adopt the findings of the, finding of facts that's written in section five of the staff report and deny the special exception for FPD 20-003.
It's been moved in second for the findings of fact. Mrs. Westendorf, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Aronson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Button?
He acknowledged, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Dr. Anaforo?
Yes.
Okay. Findings of fact have been passed six to zero. Is there another suggested motion?
Before I make a motion, Mr. Chair, I would have a question.
Yes, sir.
Given the, given all of the, all that we've talked about here regarding this particular, this is, this is 20007, I believe. I didn't, I, I'm not sure that in the last question that you asked, that, or what, what, what answer you got, because that would bear on what, what motion I would make in terms of, if, I think you asked it of Mr. Anderson, would, if they would submit a plan that, that met all of the, met certain requirements, would that be acceptable? And I, I, I don't believe that that question was answered. At this point, I guess my, the second part of my question would be, because I asked a question about timeline, and I believe you said that they couldn't, you know, they couldn't wait until next month. Is it, would, would it be possible for us to, to table this and vote at a later time, Mr. Anderson?
Certainly.
What, what, yeah, because again, Mr. Anderson, and maybe you can word what you said better than I did. If I understood what you were asking, you were, you were asking if they would submit a complete plan that would include all of the things that we thought, basically what this building ought to look like. Mr. Anderson, if you would.
Yeah.
Clear for you.
What, first, I apologize. I, I forgot that the suggested motion, I was thinking we were doing the findings of fact first and then the motion. But you're correct, we're, we're moving on. So, let me just, for the record, put it that we're going to move on to item B, FPD 20-007, development plan, Dollar General, 633 Northland Boulevard.
Right.
Okay, my, my question was, is that if we were to get a building that was the same as the photo that Mr. Anderson supplied in his report, would we be willing to say that's, we could be, that would be acceptable to us with modifications that they might see as far as the parking or the dumpster, the trucks coming into the property, but still taking into account that they probably would need some type of, of parking in the front of the building? Just as, I think, I believe Mr. Anderson stated that that could be worked into the plan with some parking in the front, but maybe not all the parking in the front. And I would, my thought process on this was as if the commission felt that that was a fair decision to make, that maybe we could vote on it tonight to say that, yes, we approve it, pending that the building has to meet the design and quality of the Euclid Ohio Building, which we would give Mr. Anderson the authority to make that decisions of what those items are. And as far as the site plan for Mr. Anderson to work with Mr. Zofki in order to keep this, delaying it for another month, if the planning commission so approves or, or would like that to happen. That's, that's where I'm, I'm coming from on it. I mean, if, I think if we can get a, a nice development, which I think, given the photo that Mr. Anderson took, it's a, it's a nice looking building. And I don't think it's an entire, a very expensive building to change from what we have here in order to get something that I think Northland and our whole development plan can be happy with and proud of and, and still bring in a, a good corporate citizen. That's where my thought process was going, if that can be done like that. And I, I believe we could make a motion to that effect and basically leave it up to Mr. Anderson and Mr. Zofki to come up with the design. And if Mr. Zofki doesn't come up with the proper design to satisfy Mr. Anderson, then he doesn't get a, the permit. It's either that or he comes back and, and gives us that building and works with Mr. Anderson on the, on the layout, and then we look at it in 30 days from now. So, I think there's a choice here of what, what we can do. And, and I know I asked Mr. Zofki, and he wasn't quite sure because he didn't understand thoroughly what that Euclid building looked like, which I appreciate and I respect that he doesn't know what that is. But I'm just, I'm thinking of maybe trying to do something where everybody can be happy.
You're, you're looking at a, a, a motion, a contingency motion.
Correct, I think it's a motion. It's a conditions motion.
Right, okay.
You know, where the basic condition would be that it has to meet, has looked like the Euclid Ohio Building with Mr. Anderson basically making the decision, did it look like it? Are those the same things? And, you know, we're basically, I guess, giving him authority to make the decisions on what the building should look like and the layout should be. And if he can't come to an agreement with Mr. Zofki, then, then it's a moot point. As it would be set, it would be a shorter period than, than coming back to us with revised plans in 30 days.
Mr. Zofki, what's your feeling? Would that be acceptable to you? Because if it's not, there's no point in us proceeding with it.
You know, again, guys, I wish, I'm, I apologize. I wish I was familiar with, with that building specifically, because it's, you know, you have a target on that building. And, and, you know, I, I just, I can't agree to, without knowing or understanding that building specifically, I can't agree to provide the same thing at this time until I, you know, I, I'll have to research what, you know, what the finished level is, where it's located. There's a lot of things I need to, I guess, understand before agreeing to that.
I, I don't, I don't think we're asking you to agree. That I think, I think with Mr. Anderson, maybe you can tell him what, what you, what you're saying. It's not saying you've got to agree that that's what it's going to look like. Go ahead, Mr. Sir.
Right, I, I don't, we're not asking you to agree. We're asking you to, does this sound reasonable to you to try to work it with Mr. Anderson? And you and him work it back and forth, so you don't have to come back to us in 30 days. And if it doesn't work for you, you got the right to walk away from it. Just like if it doesn't work for Mr. Anderson, that the city of Forest Park walks away from it.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I'm, I'm willing to continue working with him. And, and look, we, we want to, we want the city of Forest Park to be happy. We, we want to be happy with, with the final product. And yeah, so we, I'm, I'm willing to continue to work with, with Mr. Anderson on it, absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson, if you would, if you would word that motion, I'll second it. And we can go on it, and, you know, that, that moves it on. It gets, it gets it, basically, we, we, the commissioners are saying, we're giving Mr. Anderson the authority to work out a deal with Mr. Zofki that he thinks would be, you know, that, that they would agree on. And if they can't come up with an agreement, then everything, all bets off.
Right. Now, before I make the motion, I'd just like for Mr. Anderson to make a comment, because I'm kind of reading body language there, and it's kind of going, could go either way on this. So, what are your feelings on this?
No, I, I, I think the, the way that you propose this is, is, is fine. I feel like I've thrown more gasoline under the fire than I intended to with this, with this picture that I, in the, in the report. I, in, in putting it in there, I was, what I was really just trying to illustrate was a, a general stance on providing, I call them more upscale materials and alike, that, that I just felt like on the one, at, at one stage of this development, I just felt were not possible. I don't think that was stated in just that way, but that was the impression that I took. And then to see that, okay, well, maybe they are possible, but we just haven't proposed it because you haven't asked for it. That was what the idea that I was trying to get across. In terms of these two buildings, the one that's in the plans and the one that's in that picture, there aren't a lot of differences. And I feel like the differences that there are, are incremental and can, could be worked out. So, I feel the same way that we can, we can work with whatever the planning commission passes. And, and I'd see that, that it appears that as a group that you are inclined to approve it. And that's what I would like to do, given that, you know, I just, again, I had my recommendation and, and I provided it. You have your decision, you say, go work on it, that's fine.
Okay. Well, first, I'd like to just bring up one other point is that we've been doing this a long time, a lot of us have. And I absolutely do not blame any developer for coming in with what I would say are minimums. If they want to do that, that's okay. And I, and if I were in your shoes, I'd be doing the same thing, and I've done the same thing. But when, you know, I come in and if somebody expects a little bit more, I don't blame you for not coming in with more in the first place. So, I think in this particular case, maybe it's, there's a little redness around all this and a little bit of, you know, rough, the roughness around the edges a little bit. And I think we need to, to try to work together, because we're going to be possibly working together for a long, long time. And I hope we can do that. And that's what Forest Park stands for. We try to do the best we can for everybody and try to think of ways to make things happen rather than think of ways not to do things. So, I think that would, you know, that would be the way to go. So, I think that would, you know, that would be the way to go. So, I hope there's, we get over the kind of tenseness or animosity and go on to the next thing and let's make this thing work. Because I think it can be a good development and I agree with Mr. Anderson. I've, I've got a construction background. I don't think this building's a whole lot different or a whole lot more expensive than what you're looking at. I think we can just tweak a few things and make it look that nice. And I think everybody can walk away, be happy and you're not going to be spending an armload of money, Mr. Zofky. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission approve the development plan for Dollar General at 633 Northland Boulevard with the following conditions. Those conditions are that development plans in any and all requirements for the property and property development be submitted to Mr. Anderson and for Mr. Anderson and the community development department's complete approval prior to any building permits or anything being given to the applicant. Number two, the applicant will work with Mr. Anderson to come up with a design that is acceptable to both. And in the event that the design is not acceptable to both, that either party can decline that and this motion will be void.
I second.
Okay, so we have a motion and hopefully Mrs. Westendorf, you got all that.
It's being recorded. We're good.
So, and if not, hopefully they taped it because I probably couldn't repeat it again. So, is there any discussion on the motion?
I just want to say thank you. And that's really, you know, I think, I think at the end of the day, we'll have a product that we're both very happy with. And like I'll say again, we're excited about being in Forest Park and investing here. And, you know, we have a lot of faith in this and we think both sides will be very happy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zofky. And hopefully in six or eight months from now, we can see the ribbon cutting. Mrs. Westendorf, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Aronson.
Yes.
Mr. Smith. Dr. Bunton.
Yes.
Mr. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Dr. Anaforo.
Yes.
Okay, the motion was approved six to zero. Is there any other new business? No other new business. Okay, well then, we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:55 PM. And I appreciate everybody and I hope that everybody's staying safe.